Thank you. It's necessary for us to move into executive session. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Motion made. Back in session, school committee members and student reports. School committee chair report, nothing at this time. Resource committee, Mr. Stevens.
Resource committee, we met this past week. We went over the grants to submit, which we have an emergency planning grant that we're submitting for $50,000. We also have, there are no grants to be accepted. We had a donation of $5,000 to the Crocker Field Fund, and that came from the relays. We were given an enrollment update. We had school nurses and after-school compensation that we agreed upon, and we will, that is on tonight's agenda. We have also on tonight's agenda, the tech and para-professionals wage scale adjustment is on tonight's agenda.
Roll right into school building needs. Eight questions? Who's that?
That's Zoom.
Zoom, sorry. Where else happened?
Oh, okay.
Building needs, we were given an update by Assistant Director Mark Casparian. The South Street elevator will be under repair for probably in the next 16 weeks. The FHS generator failed. We will be renting one for about $9,000. About $9,000 a month.
I don't know what's going on here.
That has to go out to bid. That's why we're renting, because it'll be over the $150,000. Is that the figure, Mr. Roach?
Yes.
I can't hear nothing again now. Oh, man.
Window project at Long Joe will be done by August. We had an update on the architectural engineer selection for capital projects, which was BLW, and they've came in with a bid of like $388,000 for all of the capital projects that they're talking about. And we were given an update on the solar projects in the school system. So if anybody has any questions, speaking of solar projects, Mr. Roach could answer some of those questions.
Dr. Knight, you have a question? Dr. Knight? Okay, okay. That was my report. That's your report, okay. Policy Subcommittee, Mr. Horgan is not with us this evening. We'll move on to... Dr. Knight, did you want to say something? Okay. I'm moving on. While Students Support Subcommittee, Dr. Knight is... I don't know, are you, can you hear me, Dr. Knight?
I don't think she can hear us.
No.
Well, usually I mute because she can hear through this, so...
Yeah.
I can ask her.
Dr. Knight?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
Go ahead.
Just, I just wanted to say I'm here. I don't know what's going on with the connection, but I'm here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. School Personnel. Policy Subcommittee, we said, yeah, Mr. Horgan's ideas, Students Support. Dr. Knight. Dr. Knight. Okay. School Personnel Committee. Nothing to report at this time. Executive Committee, the same. Student reps, or rep. Please.
Good evening, fellow school committee members. Journey is unable to be with us today, but today is both sad and special for us as it is our last school committee meeting to cap off this amazing year. Firstly, I'd like to shed some light on the past year here at Fitchburg Public Schools. There is no way to explain this year other than up and down. There have been great times and amazing opportunities, but insane life events that we can only move forward with and be thankful for. The last day of school was this past Friday, June 23rd, where kids at Fitchburg High were able to make up grades and finish off their finals. Along with this, the middle and elementary schools also had their field days in which high school students were able to volunteer and create memories with those younger than us. June is also LGBTQ+ Pride Month, and in celebration, FHS held a parade to celebrate this month and those within the community at our school. Following this, shout out to Sandra McGann for being awarded Best Featured Female Performer in the Marquee Musical Theater Award from Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild for her performance as the Foe and Beauty in the Beast. This award is extremely well deserved. Congrats, Sandra. The Black Student Union at Fitchburg High attended the Juneteenth event held on Saturday, June 17th. Thank you to Reverend Annie, the First Baptist Church, and anyone else who helped in making this event available to the community of Fitchburg to celebrate this historical event. The BSC was so happy to have been there, volunteered, and raised some money by selling many treats such as cake pops and cookies. This past week, from June 17th to June 23rd, I and 12 other juniors at Fitchburg High School had the opportunity to attend Boys and Girls State, giving us the chance to sit in many different government positions and learning the behind-the-scenes of government, law, and economics. Thank you to the American Legion and Auxiliary and all our sponsors for allowing us to have this opportunity. There's not much to say today due to school being out, but I'd like to give thanks to my Vice Principal and Principal, Ms. Leva and Ms. Sherrett, for giving me and Journey the opportunity to be here and be able to speak with you all this year. I've learned a lot from my experience so far and can't wait to start back up in September. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Any questions? Comments? Thank you, nicely done. Is this it for you tonight?
No.
Yes. No? She comes back in September, right?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Let's have a round of applause for this.
Thank you.
Approval of the minutes from the previous school committee meeting, June 5th, 2023.
Make a motion to approve them.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded to approve, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, we are unanimous. Next, approval of the minutes from the previous school committee meeting of the special school committee meeting of June 12th. Motion made.
Second.
Seconded to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, it is unanimous, thank you. Communications. Sally, you want to...
Public comment.
You want to go in there, okay. Public comment, anyone wishing to make public comment?
Actually, I did want to make a public comment.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. This is Sally Cragan. I live at 1138 Oak Hill Road. I serve as a Fitchburg City Councilor-at-Large in our great city. I have Spencer Cat here with me, but I'm actually here to talk to you all, to urge everyone to be aware that Lemmister Hospital is planning to close labor and delivery on September 22nd. How does this connect to our agenda? It connects to everything. It will have an effect on our budget. It will have an effect on personnel. We are going to, the hospital, the hospital board, which is a public entity, let me remind you, made the decision to close without consultation with our mayor, without consultation with our state representatives or our senator. We are all engaged in protesting this and asking the State Board of Health and Lemmister Hospital to reconsider. We have a petition. I will send it around the room while I'm here. Mr. Stevens also has an announcement about a forthcoming protest when it comes to communications, but we really want everyone to be aware this will have a devastating effect. We have many students who have families who are expecting right now, and I know because we were at Fitchburg High School on Wednesday, and we got over 350 kids to sign. Not one student knew about this. They had not heard about this. The hospital has kept it very quiet. They have not really advertised it, and I urge my friends at The Sentinel, for whom I write, to cover this story. It is not good for our region. So that is what I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and school committee, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Cragan.
The announcement that, it's communications, but it's save the date to Save Our Birthing Center, June 29th, 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. 268 Washington Street, Lemmister. A few weeks ago, a UMass Memorial Health Alliance Clinton Hospital contracted, local legislators informed them that the hospital maternity ward would be closing on September 22nd, 2023. We are coming together as a community to have this decision reversed for the sake of all of our expectant mothers and their babies. We would love to see you there.
Could you say the date again, please? Date and time again?
Yes. The date and time, June 29th. It would be this Friday.
Thursday.
Thursday, thank you, Ms. Cragan. Yeah. 5:30 to 7:30. At where? Again, at 268 Washington Street, Lemmister.
Is that the hospital address?
I think so.
It is not.
No?
It's near the hospital.
It's near the hospital, Washington Street.
Is it the temple? Is it?
Correct.
It's the temple.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, moving on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Joe Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If possible, I'd just like to go a little bit out of sequence. Tonight, we have a new staff member who will be joining Fitchburg High officially on July 1. I'd like to welcome future Principal Dr. John Braga to the podium. Introduce yourself.
Thank you so much. I'm John Braga. I'm the incoming principal of Fitchburg High School. I'm so very excited and happy to be here. There was a couple opportunities throughout my career to come to Fitchburg, and this one really just came together. Very excited to support the community, learn more about the community, and I have a close about 20 years of experience in education, all urban education, and I'm looking forward to listening, learning more about Fitchburg and how those skills can apply here to the district. And I'm excited to be here and want to work with everybody here and throughout the community to do the best job I can and put the high school in the, you know, the, I don't want to say best shape, but to put the high school in a situation where it's doing well for years and years to come. So I'm excited to be here, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you.
Dr. Knight has her hand up.
Dr. Knight.
Yes, can you hear me? Yes, yes. Welcome, doctor. Can you repeat your name again? I didn't, wasn't able to hear.
No problem. My name is Braga, John Braga.
John, Dr. Braga. Yes, so during the search of administrators, for the administrator at Fitchburg High School, the superintendent and the search committee was making an effort to try to recruit and hire administrators of color. We weren't able to, that was not accomplished at this time. So my question to you is, sir, what do you have in plan in order to meet the needs of the students in the sense of hiring educators and staff members that is a better representation for Fitchburg, since we have such a large population of students of color, but very little representation? Students strive best when they are able to see teachers and administrators that look like them, sound like them, you know? A lot of studies out there showing that it helps them to be more creative and better problem solvers. So what do you have planned to be able to meet the needs of the students in that manner?
It's a great question. Thank you so much. So all my experience is in urban education, and if you took a journey with me throughout my leadership process, I've looked to hire and recruit educators of color, so I've had a great success with that. And so, outreach and finding out, you know, where those opportunities are and reaching out throughout our community, building within our school district, but also outside of the school district, I think can bring more educators and leaders of color into our district.
Yes, sir. So this has to be something done intentionally. I just want to suggest that you may want to reach out to Principal Curry over at Goodrich Academy. She has a very good success with recruiting staff of color at her one school, so that, you know, maybe she can give you some pointers and, you know, again, it has to be intentional, so that this can be beneficial to our students. Thank you so much, sir.
No problem. And just to give you a data point, where I'm coming from at my last principalship, two of my four principals were principals of color.
Awesome. Awesome. We do need it, we do need it. You know, our students need all the help they can so that their academic performance can improve, and you know, that's what we're looking forward to. Thanks again, sir. I'm sorry I'm so far away.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Yous.
Am I correct to assume that you're the native Spanish speaker?
I'm a native Portuguese speaker, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, okay. Absolutely. Thank you. And I...
Not that that's important, you know what I mean?
No, 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 no. And just by the, you know, by the census, I am identified as Hispanic, Portuguese-speaking Hispanic, but Hispanic, so just to kind of put that all in.
And I wanted to bring, I wanted to note that, because, and I'm glad that we got a chance to dialogue about this, and the fact that you say you will perfectly do the best you can. I don't want you to feel any pressure.
No, no, no.
Let me finish. By feeling like you have to intentionally go and grab somebody of color. From a member of this community that's been here a while and has served this community, I feel like to the best of my ability, I would encourage you to get the best people possible to put in front of our kids that can pull out the best in them. That's what I'm looking for. And that's what I'll be calling you about, and that's what every parent will be asking about. Are the teachers, administrators, whoever in front of our kids are going to pull out the best in them? If they're black, then so be it. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart. If they're white, so be it. I want the best in front of our kids, so when we, kids apply for college or a job, wherever they go, then they'll know they came from Fitchburg High and they had the best possible opportunity to succeed because they had the best people in front of them. Thank you.
And my ultimate goal, what will be my staff's ultimate goal, is to do the best job for the students in front of us. So all the students are successful. And again, all of my experience is in urban education, you know, from the Boston Public Schools to Lynn Public Schools. So I'm not new to urban education, and I have a history of success, and I want to continue that history of success here. I'm here for a reason. I'm here to support the school and to support the community, to create, to continue to create a successful school system, because there are success stories that have already been happening. I'm not just coming here to make it successful, but to continue that success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. That's okay. Okay, thank you. So we'll get back to the formal part of the agenda. Ms. Cragan, do you want to turn to the podium to talk about positive therapy pets?
So, good evening, everyone. I believe this is our ninth year of bringing therapy pets to Fitchburg schools. Fitchburg Public Schools has been and continues to be the leader in the state on therapy pets in the classrooms. I made up a kind of a picture collage, which is in your packet, which kind of gives the highlights as to what we are doing, what we have done. Every Monday, we've been at Rheingold School and learning perspectives. We were down two pet teams in the fall, but fortunately, two people came forward, both with dogs. They have been able to really kind of pick things up, and we have added additional visits to Long, I'm sorry, to Crocker and to McKay. I was at McKay for the entirety of the after-school program. We posted vigorously on Facebook and Fitchburg Public Schools, talking to kids not only about taking care of pets, but about taking care of wildlife, about appreciating, you know, the kind of humanity that pets give all of us. I brought as a special guest, and I came early so people could visit, Spencer. Let me see. He's on a very thick pillow, so, here. I'll turn him this way so you guys can see. What I was telling some folks earlier is we have a wide range of pets. We have a Bernese Mountain Dog, owned by Cap Cordovan. We have a really beautiful American Rabbit, owned by Helen Donlin, who has been with us since the start. We have a Golden Lab, owned by Jen Bragden, who is also a parent of kids in our district. This is Spencer. I sometimes bring Saru, who is our Catahoula Leopard Dog mix. And what we found is that kids on the spectrum really connect to smaller animals. So having this wide range of therapy pets makes a difference in reaching all kids. I have had kids look at him and say, "Oh, I don't like cats. Is he going to bite me?" Same with the dogs. But what we found, one, because we've been doing this for so long in the system, is that they're, the kids are more likely to be interested. And I got great photographs of kids basically swarming around Saru, our dog, during the McKay after-school and at Crocker. So we're certainly open to questions. We come here every year, and we also attend the Mass Association of School Committees. We are their presenter on therapy pets, and since COVID kind of, you know, hit us, you know, hit the world, we went from basically being Fitchburg, the only therapy pet kind of regular in schools, to last November, a dozen school districts told me that they had implemented therapy pets. dozen school districts told me that they had implemented therapy pets primarily with guidance. It was not in a teaching situation, but in guidance, which is a plus. All of these people said that they had looked at Fitchburg as the model, and they were able to go to their districts and say, "Well, Fitchburg does it." And this is how they do it. So I'm really, really proud of that work, and I'm really proud to have spent 14 years on the school committee kind of developing this. So I'll leave it to this. If you have questions for Spencer, I cannot promise he will answer.
Questions?
Thank you.
Question?
Sure.
How is Be Positive funded, Sally?
Thank you. So we are actually, we are affiliated with a nonprofit, which is Friends of Fitchburg Dogs. That's the organization that looks after the dog park. And we actually have had costs rise. So we do a fair amount of development. We do, I haven't had a chance to really send out letters about it, but we are open to contributions from the community. So if people are interested, you can visit the Friends of Fitchburg Dogs on the website, or you can just go to, you can email me directly. I also made up forums. I always carry these around, so I can start these. Here, I'll start.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're kind of the little engine that could. I donate a lot of time kind of organizing this program, but our costs include insurance. Believe me, people do ask, "Are you insured?" The Fitchburg Public Schools have asked, "Are we insured?" Yes, we're insured. We do have to pay for that insurance. We also pay for mileage if people are traveling a distance. We also pay for board insurance. It is really important that we do things correctly, and we do things as they're recommended. There is not an international or national sort of association of therapy pet organizations. So we have built something in Fitchburg which we felt was very much needed. And we are very appreciative of, you know, the hospitality that our principals, our teachers, our students, our parents give. I also, I left off, this coming Tuesday, we are doing the goat hike over at the Central Mass Goat Rental Farm in Lunenburg. We have had for the past three years an exciting project at Rhinegold. Goats that eat weeds are invited to Rhinegold, and they're put behind an electric fence, so they're kept safe and the students are safe. And it's been a field trip for all the kids for a week. And I believe the mayor came out. Yeah, and you got to see them working.
Unbelievable. No gas or electricity required. They go through it, go one day, and they come back the next day, and it's all gone.
Yes.
I mean, it's unreal.
And the lesson that the kids get is how domestic animals and how, you know, environmentally safe this is. The goats ended up clearing part of the path that goes down to Depot Street, which was in danger of being overgrown. But the questions that kids had, you know, can they eat poison ivy? Well, why do they have horns? Tammy Hebert, the owner of Central Mass Goat Rental, and I probably put in about 15 hours just donating at the school while kids were there. So we were there to greet kids. We made up a whole curriculum about it, and we had kids enter the goat, the art and writing contest for the Rhine goats. So we are very grateful for the support and for Superintendent Joe Clough seeing that this was something that would be important for kids coming back from COVID. So, yep, it's not just animals with leashes, it is also domestic. I'm sorry, you have a comment? No, I guess we're good. That was the comment. Okay, back in the box. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Sally. Okay, next up, I'd like to welcome the Memorial Instructional Leadership Team with Principal Lavoy and Assistant Principal Shawn Walker to come up and talk about their Teacher Leadership Academy presentation. This is part of initiative that we had as part of our strategic plan to build leadership across the school district. So tonight, what you'll hear is, I think, a little bit of a condensed version of the presentation that we had last week. So this has been a proud moment for, I'll say, me as superintendent, you know, for the district, as we try to expand our leadership bench, depth and breadth across our district. And Memorial's presentation tonight is all yours, Mary Beth. So just please introduce yourself, if you haven't been before school committee before, and who you are and what you do.
Absolutely. Would you mind advancing to the next slide? Thank you. I'm Dr. Mary Beth Donlin. I'm the literacy coach at Memorial Middle School. And before we continue on with our introduction and presentation, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Fitchburg Public Schools for giving us the opportunity to participate in this Teacher Leadership Academy. And I also want to thank all of the members of the school committee for allowing us to speak about our project in particular and our experience tonight. One of our colleagues, Tim Cannon, was unavailable to join us this evening, but I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge all of the work he did to contribute to the project and the information that we will be sharing with you this evening.
I am Melissa Jason, and I am the Educational Team Leader for Special Education at Memorial.
My name is Carrie Boyden, and I teach sixth grade science at Memorial Middle School.
So what is the Teacher Leadership Academy? It's an eight-month program in partnership with Fitchburg Public Schools and Focus Schools, designed to build teacher capacity, enhance leadership skills to transform instructional practices, to develop a better understanding of the nuances of various leadership styles, and ultimately, to improve academic outcomes for students. The graphic that you see on the screen reminds us that the Fitchburg values really permeate our role as leaders. And so we learned a great deal about how to incorporate these values into becoming better instructional leaders within the school. Ultimately, the idea is if our skills are refined as instructional leaders, our colleagues' skills will be strengthened, and thus, there'll be better academic outcomes for students. As part of this Teacher Leadership Academy, we had to take on a project designed to improve Memorial Middle School. So tonight, we're going to share with you a little bit more information about not only what we learned through the Teacher Leadership Academy, but also what project we undertook to improve academic outcomes for students.
Good evening. Tonight, we share with you our journey and participation in facilitating data inquiry cycles as part of our leadership experience in the Teacher Leader Academy program. As members of our school's instructional leadership team, our process began by implementing a system to gather pre- and post-test data to analyze student work and assess effectiveness of instructional strategies. Keeping the district's core values in mind throughout the process really connected our purpose and our direction while leading and supporting the teachers throughout the data cycle.
And to perform this data cycle, we strategically chose our standards for our intervention groups. Our intervention or acceleration block is an extra block during the day for 45 minutes that teachers are able to work on skills that are not necessarily in the pacing guide. And then each content standard, each content area was able to prepare lessons based on helping the students reach goals in that specific standard.
So why did we select a data inquiry cycle as our project for the Teacher Leadership Academy? Well, our goal as educators ultimately is to improve academic outcomes for students so that we can close the achievement gap and positively impact students' futures. We thought that a data cycle was the best way to achieve this because it's an intentional way to not just simply hope for the best, but rather strategically support high-quality instruction for all students. The idea is that if we're constantly reviewing data and student work samples, we can adjust our instruction to enhance the students' learning opportunities and their academic experiences. So ultimately, what was the impact on student learning? For the Humanities Department, we began by examining long-term MCAS data, historical MCAS data, to identify trends over time. Then, we looked at short-term data from eye-ready testing to see what story the data was telling for the students in front of us. Based on that, in the Humanities Department, we realized that students needed more experience and opportunities to work on analyzing informational texts, specifically understanding how an author crafts an informational text. And we realized that this would support Memorial Middle School's mission to develop critical thinkers. So our ELA and Social Studies teachers collaborated to support lessons related to this concept. 100% of grade levels in the Humanities Department saw an improvement in their area of focus based on the post-test results that occurred at the conclusion of this work. I know our time is limited tonight, but hopefully, all of you will have an electronic copy of these slides, where I have attached a couple of samples from teachers where they visually represented student growth over time, and they also reflected on their own experience. These reflections really underscored the idea that the Teacher Leadership Academy was not just to refine the skills of the individuals here tonight, but it was to strengthen our skills so that we can strengthen and support our colleagues' skills so that that transfers to student learning. We do have preliminary MCAS results at this time. It is embargoed, so I'm not going to share the specifics publicly, but I will say that taking a glance and running some calculations, I can already tell that there's been significant improvements since last MCAS in those areas directly addressed through this inquiry cycle. In fact, there's one grade level that exceeded the state average for their area of focus that was addressed through this process, which means that in that grade level, our students outscored their peers across the Commonwealth.
And to speak on behalf of the math and the science department, in a collaborative facilitation with our math colleagues and coach, we in the science department had the opportunity to launch the data cycle, strategically adapt our instructional strategies, and provide small group instruction, all while being a little bit vulnerable, since it was outside the science department's content area. We use the information to analyze and measure the impact of student growth and determine our next steps. In this current cycle, what we noted was considerable growth in grades six and eight on the statistic standards. The vertical collaboration with the science and the math department proved to be impactful for student learning and growth, and the intentional dedicated PLC time demonstrated the effectiveness of planning targeted interventions.
And now, to speak a little bit about the special education side of our data cycles. This was an opportunity for special ed liaisons to just take their caseload during this intervention block. And during this process, they were familiarized with the process of a formal data cycle and able to hone in on one specific standard with their specific caseload. Through this, they saw success with their students and just the ones that they have the IEPs and the goals for, and they saw the success, so that increased the buy-in in the process as well. Growth was seen in each of the cycles, and highlights include the graphing proportional relationships and the expressions and equations in eighth grade. In this process, reflective practices were embedded into each cycle and the planning of the next. And like I previously said, the liaisons were able to track progress of their caseload, and it wasn't an extra task for them. It just went along with what they were already doing.
So we learned a great deal by being enrolled in the Teacher Leadership Academy and also by carrying out our particular project. We did not want to just participate in this as something to check the box. We wanted to become transformational leaders for our school, where we were changing and making sustainable change in terms of the practices, roles, and systems at Memorial Middle School. For myself, I learned that transformational leadership occurs most effectively when the instructional focus is narrowed. I tend to be someone who wants to take on everything all at once, but what I realized through this program is that if you take small, intentional, and strategic steps consistently over time, that can have a much greater impact on student learning.
And as I reflect on the process and the work in providing accountability systems in all classrooms for all students, I recognize the implementation of internal accountability system is ongoing and includes varied leadership approaches at different stages. It's not one size fits all, rather a willingness to make an impact on student growth and achievement by providing learning opportunities for all students. It's important to recognize the willingness to be adaptable and intentional as a leader when implementing systems and changes in order to create the shifts towards successful outcomes for all students in the long run.
As it being my first year in this position, something that I really took from this process with the Teacher Leadership Academy is the balance of applying pressure, but also having that accountability and being basically that safe space for teachers to feel vulnerable to try something new, to go through a process that they've never done, and doing the two and being that war and demander is a delicate balance.
So where do we go from here? As I mentioned before, we didn't want to simply cross something off a list and say, "Okay, we got to the end of this program." We wanted to use this as an opportunity to improve Memorial Middle School. And so one of our next steps is to continue the data inquiry cycle with teachers and students at the beginning of the year next year and remain consistent throughout the year. Teachers have really expressed their enthusiasm in this process. As they saw the results on student learning, they felt really encouraged and inspired to take this approach to instruction, so we look forward to carrying this out more next year.
And I know there's already been talk of having another cohort of the Teacher Leadership Academy, and I definitely would encourage our colleagues to take the opportunity to get on board with that. It was a great learning experience. I learned a lot about myself, still more to learn, but it's definitely something that would be beneficial for our future teacher leaders.
Additionally, Carrie Purcell and Focus Schools are offering a second cohort for our group of teachers and leaders, so we will be participating in the second year of our Leadership Academy as well.
And just to take a quote from the Atomic Habits book, "Fix the inputs, and the outputs will fix themselves," and that is something that we truly learned through the data cycle inquiry that we took part in. Thank you very much.
Dr. Knight has her hand up.
Dr. Knight.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I love, I love that initiative that, you know, you all were involved in. I do have a question, and it sounds wonderful, and I, you know, and certainly, transformation and leadership is extremely important, and I like the way you are approaching it, but I just wanted to point out, or at least ask the question, are you, were there any provisions for the, for leadership focusing on English learners and students with disability? You know, because those are, that target group, or that target group of students tend to score, to score lower than what we need them to score, so that they don't, the average, the final average of the outcome of the students is not too low. So are we doing anything to address that, or were there anything that was shared with you during the academy or during the teacher training, the leadership training, to address English language learners and students with disability? I hope I was clear enough.
Yes, thank you for that excellent question. Throughout the process, we just highlighted our particular involvement, but this was something that was done school-wide. So our ESL teachers were part of this process, our special education teachers, which Melissa can speak to more, all engaged in this data inquiry cycle. So we highlighted a few components of it, a few aspects, but this was really something undertaken by teachers who work with all different subgroups across the school. Melissa, I don't know if you want to speak to the special education side of that.
So, like I said, or actually, like Ms. Donlin said, every teacher in the building did go through these data cycles, as well as the ESL teachers and the special education teachers. During that acceleration block, every teacher in the building is able to take a smaller group. Sometimes the groups are not as small as we would like, but smaller group and a more focused- focused group, and the ESL kiddos were also identified during this time. Dr. Knight, does that answer your question?
Thank you, thank you so much. I just don't want us to forget about that population so special to us. We want to make sure that they are taken care of also. Thank you very much. Yes, I'm sorry, I'm far, so I had to unmute. But thank you very much for the work that you're doing. That's awesome.
Quick question. Thank you very much to begin with. It sounds very exciting and anxious to see the MCAS scores.
I'm anxious to share them with you.
You're embargoed still, Jim.
I know, I know. And I'm happy for all of you that Memorial is going to be able to go in the second year of the cohort. And my question is, for teachers coming into Memorial who weren't there this year, will it be much of a learning curve for them to be involved in this second year of the Teacher Leadership Academy?
I think, you know, I can't, there were a variety of schools involved in this, so I can't speak to the other schools, but at Memorial Middle School, I will say that we have a very comprehensive team. I'm a coach, we have a math coach as well, our administrative team is strong. We really try to embody the Pittsburgh value of collaboration, so I do think there will be, of course, some bit of learning for anyone that's new, but I think our team is excellent at coming together and supporting these new individuals. And there will be a second cohort where new individuals can join and get that more individualized attention to support their growth in this area. So I think part of being in this Teacher Leadership Academy was we learned how to be better leaders and how to guide people who might be new to the process. So I'm excited, and I'm sure my colleagues are as well, that when we have new teachers, we are more able to lead them in a skillful way towards our vision and mission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My question, well, first of all, I want to thank you all for the work that you're doing, and I really, really appreciate it. My question is, is this a model that you're going to encourage other schools in the district to be a part of, or are they a part of it? Because if they are, excuse me for not knowing that.
So it's sort of twofold. We had schools across the district that were involved in the Teacher Leadership Academy, so I think the skills that we've gained aren't just isolated to Memorial. In terms of the data inquiry cycle, I think it's something schools are all trying to do, but I think any of us would be happy to continue to support and interact with any school that might want to learn from our particular experience, because I think, again, not to overuse the word collaboration, I think when all schools can really connect and collaborate, we have so much we can learn from each other.
I just want to be sure that these opportunities are across the district.
I agree.
And especially if it's improving the bottom line, which is student performance, MCAS, and all the measures that the state, you know, measures us by. So if we're having this huge impact at Memorial, then I think that we really, really need to explore how we can move this into other schools in the district as soon as possible.
We do have this across the district. It's been offered across the district. So at the presentation last week, we had five schools present to each other and to the cabinets.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to, again, thank the district for providing this opportunity, because I can already tell you, so these three very, very smart, very, very effective women are doing administrative internships under me currently. I mean, ultimately, our job as school leaders are to work ourselves out of that job and make sure that there's sustainability behind us. So I know that completely in my absence, that Memorial is in good hands, and that's thankful because Superintendent Jokla has invested in deepening the successes of Pittsburgh and the leadership breadth and depth that we have, because there will always be a next generation, so they'll be able to continue their learning next year, as well as they've already recruited colleagues to join into this. And like Mr. Hughes was saying, ultimately, it's not just an exercise, it's not a dog and pony show, it's going to affect the bottom line, and students are going to benefit from it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you. It was a great presentation, and we will be, next school year, we are working on actually now planning a second cohort of the TLA, and I've already had, I think, between 10 and 15 teachers reach out to me saying they're interested in participating in this program for next school year. So this will definitely be something we'll be bringing back. So I just wanted to thank everyone for their hard work and dedication to this. It's great to see. Thank you.
It's something the committee has been working on for some time, that training and retaining, you know, so that's big with us, and we will give you all the professional development that we can, but we want you to stay here too. We want to keep you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Before we resume the strategic plan, I have someone who's late to the attendance here, Sally Craganath, if I could recognize that.
Hi. Special ed is very important. I'm just feeling this lesson, and I missed the conversation, so I apologize for that. Sally, a service speaker. This is Kiefer. Kiefer is a full- fledged service dog who is now working with the public service. He's been in other places already, and I have him as a service dog for me, but I can also see what he's doing with the kids, which is just fun. We had a little guy, I can't remember his name, but a man that we loved him, was not reading, he wanted me to do the reading after one time with him. The next day, he was ready, and walked in the door with the book, saying, "I want to read the teeth." Plus, we got money, we got other things, but it's just, it's amazing, and I'm so glad that I got involved in it. I'm a retired, half-dead member of the church, I retired last year. So this guy, we're also training the kids about service dogs, so they know that if they see him in his harness, they learn. It's just like a wheelchair. We talk to him, we say, "Would you like to go wheelchair?" "Oh, no, that's silly." He's a wheelchair. And I can honestly say that I had another little guy, and his mom ran into me up at Henderson's, and he grabbed her hand, he said, "No, mommy, you can't talk to him, he's a wheelchair." He did it. So we're educating the kids, educate the parents on service dogs, and then being able to pet them. And as I see him now, he's a neighbor of the street. All I can do is let him off the leash, and be right behind you guys, and let him pet. So if you'd like to see him, I can do that, but if you have other people waiting, you can. So, thank you very much. If you see him on the Fourth of July, he just turned four. Yeah, he's 123 pounds. He looks a little bit...
123.
123, yeah.
I just want to say, when Mrs. Stevens stood up for this song, he immediately looked at him.
And smiled.
And didn't do anything until he took the picture. It was crazy.
Or was it 25 in Swiss, which we have an awesome talk on the kids. And he speaks Spanish because of our mailman, and he speaks English. So he's a pretty smart little guy. I've had this with you, six weeks old, and I trained him with a woman that trained with needs. She now is on the program, so he's, yeah.
And his name?
His name is Kiefer. Kiefer Von Trumbull.
Kiefer, like Kiefer himself, so?
No, yes, yes.
Kiefer, okay.
But it's Kiefer Von Trumbull, which is drummer, and he comes from Switzerland, he's a full Swiss prick, and he's named after a very dear friend of mine in Switzerland, and Kiefer, who happens to be a drummer. And he's like, he's talking to me. But yeah, thank you very much. If you want him in any of your schools, communicate with him. Well, let's see the good. Trying to whip that out, so.
Thank you for coming.
Well, like I said, I'm sorry. Kiefer, Kiefer.
Back to the normally scheduled programming here. So we're going to go back to the strategic plan that we have been working on and really refining over the last couple of years. Today, we had a leadership retreat over at Memorial where we had about 40 of our leadership team talk about this year's progress, really celebrate this year's progress, and begin planning next year's professional development and action plans. So what I'd like to do is just go over a handful of slides, myself and this is Superintendent Thompson. And again, these slides in the beginning here are no stranger to the school committee, which is really our North Star and why we do what we do. But just to educate those who are maybe tuning in for the first time, if all staff, families, and community partners collaboratively identify and remove barriers to personal growth and achievement, then every student will be ready to learn and access high-quality core instruction and social emotional support. So, you know, our strategic plan is comprised of six commitments. One is curriculum that's accessible and reflective of all students, two, district-wide tier system of support, of academic and social emotional support. Third is our staff development and diverse recruitment plan, and you just saw an example of the staff development that we're making in terms of our leadership team. Strategic and effective use of all resources. At the last regularly scheduled school committee meeting, we had our budget approved. Mr. Roche put together probably one of the easiest-to-read budgets, but also informative budgets, as we're kind of now moving away from the heavy text budgets, which I started preparing 15 years ago, and now it's a lot more, probably a lot more read than the budget books that I prepared, so.
Hopefully.
I'm sure. Then really, one of the things that I'll talk about a little bit later on, too, is a sense of welcome and belonging with students, parent, staff, and all members of the community, especially important as we emerge post-pandemic. And lastly, community and stakeholder engagement. Last week, we had a community-wide brunch, and I don't know how many people came, but there were more than the last community-wide brunch, and one of the attendees mentioned that there were a lot of new faces here at the brunch, and that's a good thing. So that means more people want to get involved with the school department, helping our students grow and achieve. So looking at some of the accomplishments over the last year, and I'll go through a couple of slides, and then I'll pass the baton to Mr. Thompson here. You know, we've shifted our learning walks with our full administrative team consistently across the district, across our schools. It's beginning to become part of the practice that we do, our systems. We've revised the mentoring program this year with increased focus and accountability for mentors and mentees, and the Teacher Leadership Academy, again, which you just witnessed, to increase development of teachers as leaders in the district. We can never have enough teacher leaders, and even those who aren't in formal leadership positions, all teachers are leaders. Created the alignment of initiative and programs directly connected to the Student Opportunity Act in service of all students, which including consistent co-teaching initiative, get data debriefs, and attention to outcomes for students, all means all. Clearly defined values understood of and across the staff. Increased district-wide our school events and programs to engage all families and students to increase student success. This spring, we happened to bring about 140 students to Hatties Town, a couple of members here, and actually Principal Lavoy and I think Mr. Walker were also in attendance. Then we also had a trip to Cirque du Soleil a couple of weeks ago as well. So again, we want to be able to provide opportunities to all our students, so they can see what's happening in the outside world. It's not just all academics and reading, writing, and arithmetic. So and then lastly, we have schools that become a focus of the budget book, and again, consistent with our school-wide instructional focus at each school. Looking ahead at our opportunities for next year, really redefining what our leadership teams focus on, and again, focusing on teaching and learning and social emotional learning, performing walkthroughs, getting feedback, and following the data cycle, which we talked about today at the retreat. Having clear expectations and communication, top-down and bottom-up, all means all. We can never be too clear in our communications. And lastly, to continually grow and develop the capacity of our staff. The mentoring that we just mentioned, retention, as was mentioned earlier by one of the school committee members, professional development, leadership opportunities, and pathways for So I'm going to pass the baton to Mr. Thompson here to talk about this diagram here and the data inquiry cycle that we've been working on over the last year, and really what we're going to work on more next year to improve outcomes for students across the district.
Thank you, Mr. Jokla. So in the Memorial presentation, they talked a little bit about the data inquiry cycle and how they use that at Memorial, but this seven-step process is something that we started in the middle of the year with our consultant, Carrie Purcell, from Focus Schools. And this seven-step cycle, we asked all schools in the district to use this cycle with their instructional leadership teams this year to kind of monitor their school-wide instructional focus and looking at data to kind of see, are the strategies that we're putting in place actually helping our students' outcomes? So this seven-step process, like I said, is something that we began in, I want to say around December. All schools implemented this at some level in their buildings. What we really were happy to hear is not only did the principals do this with their instructional leadership teams, but we actually had teams of teachers that actually utilized this process on their own to actually look at student work and look at their instruction at their gray level or department to see if what they were doing was actually working with students. So quickly, this seven-step process begins with step one, they identify the challenge. You know, what is currently, what question do you currently have about the instruction or student learning in your building? Step number two is they pick a data set to look at, whether that's iReady data, iExcel data, student work, attendance data, any type of data they really want to examine that really answers or supports their challenge that they're having. Based on that, they work together in teacher teams to draw conclusions about what the data is saying and why. On step number four, they brainstorm next steps. Okay, what are the next steps based on that data? Based on those steps, they implement those steps, and then they really look at what will the impact be on our students if we actually implement these steps effectively? They develop an action plan to implement the plan. They implement it for a certain amount of weeks, usually it's typically four to six weeks, and then they come back and assess the impact and make adjustments, and then they repeat that cycle again for another four to six weeks. So this data inquiry cycle is something, like I said, we're using at all our schools. Next year, the expectation is that every school will be using this every four to six weeks to monitor student outcomes. So we're going to start right in September with this cycle, and data inquiry cycle, and continuously use this throughout the school year. And then lastly, today, like Bob said, we had about 40 administrators for our end-of-the-year wrap-up, which was great. And this wrap-up, during this meeting today, we really talked about our strategic plan and what our next steps were around our strategic plan. So I'm going to give you a little bit of taste, and we'll talk a little bit about this in the fall, a little bit more in greater detail. But what we decided today is to really focus our district strategic plan on three bucket areas. The first one is clear expectations around teaching and learning. The second is clarity, really clear around systems and structures that are being implemented in the district and across our schools, and communication within and across our school district, okay? So when we think about clear expectations around teaching and learning, we really want to make sure we're focusing quality core instruction or tier-one instruction for all our students. The next piece we're talking about is making sure that we have clear learning targets and success criteria in all our classrooms, pre-K all the way to grade 12. The third is making sure that we are all using throughout the school year our data inquiry cycle that I just talked about. And then last, for around teaching and learning, was to make sure that all schools have a school-wide instructional focus and that each school is implementing their instructional practices that were decided upon at their school to reach the goals in their school-wide instructional focus. The next piece is around clarity, our systems and structures. This pretty much means that we're going to have clear systems and structures in our district and in our school. Around learning walks, that's a pretty fancy term of pretty much administrators and teachers getting into the classrooms to see exactly what's happening around teaching and learning. The other piece is feedback. We really have pockets of quality feedback right now that are being provided at our schools, and one of my goals next year is to make sure our principals are giving quality feedback to all our teachers in every school. to all our teachers in every school. Our teachers really want to become better practitioners, and one way to do that is to make sure that our administrators are providing quality feedback to them. So we're going to be supporting our administrators into learning how to do that in all our buildings this year. And again, the next piece is around role clarity, setting expectations around exactly all roles in the, in our district and what those expectations look like for the roles. Another system and structure that we talked a lot about was around social emotional learning and mindset. You know, what does that look like district-wide? We have a lot of great things happening district-wide and pockets at our schools around SEL, but we don't have a universal approach to that in the district, so we're working on that and to improve that next year. And then, you know, we had an inclusivity appraisal done a few years back around equity and inclusivity in our district, and we have to go back to revisit that. So we'll be doing that at the beginning of the year and discussing what that will look like as we move forward. And then what are those conditions for success? What do we need to be successful in all our buildings, in all our schools in Fitchburg? And do we have those conditions for success in all our buildings throughout the school district? And then our last bucket is that communication process. One of our goals is to make sure that we are communicating relentlessly with all our stakeholders, whether it's top-down, central office to administration, teachers, staff, students, families, caretakers, community members. We need to do a better job at this. So one of our goals is to improve that communication. So again, these are the three buckets of our strategic plan that we will be tightening up and improving for next year, and there'll be more to come on this in the fall.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes?
Could we get copies of this?
Absolutely, yes.
Yep. Actually, I just emailed this out to the school committee, this presentation.
Okay.
I'd like a hard copy.
You want a hard copy? Yeah. Got it. Thank you. Questions around the presentation we just delivered? I think we have Dr. Knight with her hand up. Dr. Knight?
Yes, yes, thank you so much. Yes, thank you for that, that presentation that you just put together. We are getting ready to go into a new year, and I believe this is a good time for us to do everything we can to improve teaching and learning. And I would like, I saw all the different proposal that you had, the seven steps initiative that you have there for all the, the schools and the teachers to implement. But I also wanted to just say that after safety, definitely, teaching and learning is the most important thing. And we want to be certain that our administrators are acting as instructional leaders, you know, as coaches, so that we can improve teaching, and once we improve the teaching part, then we will be able to improve the learning. There is a book, just to add to what you are already doing, and certainly that sounds very good, by Bamber Sontoyo. And what he does is he provides additional training, I think the book is called it, The Seven Layers of Leadership. And he talks about how the administrators should be acting, should be modeling the outcome that they would like to see the teachers use when presented to the students. So I'm just encouraging you to try to focus on these things. In addition to that, you mentioned that you want to provide next year a better quality, more quality of feedback. And remember, the Department of Education have their calibration method of evaluation, which a couple of administrators evaluate the teachers, and the purpose is to provide feedback that would help teachers be better teachers, improve their pedagogy, and therefore, from there, then the students will, learning will improve. So I want to encourage you to focus on these different, different areas so that we can have the better education for our students, so that they can be able to improve, and we can begin closing the existing academic achievement gap. Kudos to the presentation by Memorial School and the different things you're doing and, you know, showing some improvement, but we still have a lot of work to do. And Mr. Thompson, I know you're ready to jump in there, you're already talking about addressing equity and inclusion, and that is so important. We need to have the best, and also, we want to be able to retain the teachers that we have. So we want to, maybe you want to put out there that these are things that is going to be provided for them for next year, so that they may be encouraged to want to move forward and do the best they can, because remember, our students deserve the best. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Knight. No other questions? Next item on the agenda is the memorandum of understanding between the Fitchburg Education Association and the School Committee regarding the paraprofessionals. Mr. Thompson?
Absolutely. So a couple of weeks back, the Central Office Administration with Pete Stevens met with the FEA to discuss para wages and really retaining the pairs that we currently have and attracting pairs to Fitchburg Public Schools. So we had a few days, I think we met two or three days, to discuss, you know, what can we do in order to retain and attract more paraprofessionals? One of the things, as you all know, this year, we had a really difficult time hiring paraprofessionals this year, and we had a lot of positions left unfilled. So what we decided to do in order to attract paraprofessionals was to look at the salary grid and to see if we could make changes based on, you know, what we know now in the current hiring market out there in the community. So what we decided to do was look at the steps for the paraprofessional program pairs and the non-program pair skills. And what we decided to do was to make some adjustments. We removed steps one and two from the paraprofessional wage scale, and we looked at increasing their wages, and I think the increase overall, Mr. Roach, was around 10%, if not a little bit more, correct?
10% specifically for the program and non-program para job classes.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. And, you know, we are happy to announce that right now, starting salary for paraprofessionals based on this agreement now is at $20. So we really feel that with that increase, we are now going to be able to retain, in addition to attract qualified paraprofessionals to Fitchburg Public Schools, and that's one of the highest rates here in the region in, you know, north-central, central Massachusetts. So also, in addition to that, we also looked at giving our current staff, who have been with us, a retention bonus or incentive retention. Any paraprofessional currently who is on step five will receive a $750 payment in the fall for being with us, and all other staff members in steps one through five that have been with us will receive a one-time payment of $500 in the fall. And again, that's a retention incentive payment. Any questions on that?
What's the overall price tag for that?
$284,172 for the retention, $81,000.
Well deserved.
Okay. It was interesting, tonight, Channel 5 Everett School System was talking about their paraprofessionals and retaining them by doing some of the things that we started a couple of years ago with helping the pairs become teachers. It was interesting that we started that over two years ago. We didn't make Channel 5, though.
Okay, continuing on the agenda, as I'll be moving on, and Mr. Thompson will be the interim superintendent next year. The superintendent of the school sits on the board of the Keystone Educational Collaborative here in the area, so there's a board vote that's necessary.
At this time, we're going to have a change. Keystone Collaborative, the appointment of Keystone Collaborative is a school committee appointment, and by legislation, they would like school committee members on collaborative boards. And so for appointments, I'm going to recommend that Ms. Rosemary Reynolds become the Fitchburg School Committee appointment to the Keystone Educational Collaborative. I have talked to Mr. Thompson about this, and I've talked to Mrs. Reynolds, and she's agreed to that.
Good, okay.
I second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, she made and seconded. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Also, just more for informational purposes, there's a letter in your packet, does not require a vote by the school committee, just informing you all of Keystone's intent to purchase 143 Jocelyn Street in Lemster, which is the former Apple Hill Farm Restaurant. They are purchasing the, the building that has been used as a functional hall for a restaurant, and they'll be making also some renovations to that facility to house programming there. So that's just an FII there.
Question? The $5.37 million for the purchase, how does that affect the members of the collaborative? Do members of the collaborative have to pay for the cost of this purchase?
Well, the collaborative has a capital improvement fund, which all the board members have voted to improve. That was a year or so ago. So the district, or the collaborative is using some of that capital improvement fund for the down payment. So the $5.3 million represents 80% of the, the cost. So they're putting in money, the collaborative is putting in money, and the bank is putting in the rest.
But I guess then my question is, who pays for the $5.37 million loan?
Well, the collaborative will be, but all the tuition that will be going to the collaborative from the member districts. So instead of paying rent now, they'll be moving here. They'll be swapping rent for a mortgage payment.
Thank you, Bob.
Any other questions on Keystone? Moving on, Ms. Thompson, you want to talk about the school committee meeting dates for next year?
So in your packet, you received a list of school committee meeting dates for the '23-'24 school year. We do have on the calendar a July day if needed. So, you know, the wish of this committee, if you feel that there is a meeting that's needed in July, please let us know, and we can post that. But our first scheduled meeting for next school year is Monday, August 28th, 2023.
I think maybe August 28th is getting a little late, and nothing in July. And nothing till two months without a meeting.
Do we want to look at a date at the end of July?
I would.
So we have three Mondays at the end of the month, where we have July 17th, July 24th, and the 31st.
Any preference, any, July 31st?
Sure, July 31st.
July 31st.
Okay.
July 31st.
So we'll have a meeting on Monday, July 31st.
Instead of looking at the schedule, I probably should know this, is Juneteenth a Monday holiday? A federal holiday?
As far as I know, it is, yes.
So June 17th conflict with our meeting date in June?
Hold on, let's look. Well, that's a good question, because so next year, they have the Juneteenth holiday that Wednesday. But would we recognize that on that Monday?
I believe we would. I got to look up the calendar real quick here.
Maybe we could just wait.
Maybe as we get closer?
Yeah, okay.
We can maybe talk about that date, and we'll find out whether or not the holiday is that Monday or not.
Actually, in the calendar that we approved, that the school committee approved, it does show the Wednesday as the day of observance, June 19th, so. So apparently is a day of, or, you know, if it's on the weekend, push to Monday.
And I think the last thing is the retirees, correct?
Okay, yeah, do you have that slide?
I have that.
So annually, we announced the list of retirees. Now, for the third consecutive year, we've been going around to the retirees who happen, who are with us at the end of the school year and giving them some flowers. So all the retirees, and I'll name all of them who have retired over the last year, Sue Albert, Susan Tassanari, Lisa Gogan, Ada Alicia Whitney, Joan Romano, Jerry Galant, Joyce Baker, Carolyn Shalafou, Mary DeFrancesco, Cynthia Hashi, Lori Dyke, Paula Walsh, and Debbie Jeffries. We want to just publicly thank them for their years of service to the schools.
Thank you.
May I have just a few minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. This is my.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Do you have my?
Oh, you, you.
I do not have yours. You don't? Let me share with you. Okay. Hello, how are you? I'm broadcasting. I'm going to actually go to the podium. So first of all, I want to thank the school committee for supporting not only me, but the team of leaders in Fitchburg and educators, as we've educated the students through probably the most difficult time in our country and certainly in public education. So what I'm going to be sharing with you tonight is just a summary of the presentation that I shared with our leadership team, thanking them this morning, and really kind of telling a little bit of a story of why it was important for me, but also the actions that we took to help the students, the staff, and the community. So for me, it all started way back when, I won't say the name of the year, but at Crocker Elementary School, my first-grade class, that's me, the third one from the right on the screen, and, you know, it's interesting how life's journey goes, starting at Crocker and in a way, ending at Crocker. And Crocker Elementary School at that time was a K-6 school, and I would say then, it was the best elementary school in, in Fitchburg, if not the state. So I want to thank the teachers at Crocker for putting me on the path that eventually led me back to Fitchburg and to service the students of Fitchburg. One of the highlights clearly over, you know, my 15 years here in the district, and especially the last year, was really a surprise visit by the governor to Fitchburg High School earlier this spring. This was a tremendous opportunity for our students to speak directly to the state leader, Governor Healy, Secretary Tuttweiler, Commissioner of Public Education, K-12, Commissioner Riley, and others. But to me, the reason why this is important is because our students were all able to share their voice and express their voice and be heard by the leaders of this state. The feedback that I received from Secretary Tuttweiler and others was how great our kids are. I think that's something that we all know and we're proud of, and we're glad that we had the opportunity to share that. And I'm sad that Zoe left here, because she said that that day was one of the highlights of her life as well, so. You know, as we close the year, it's really about celebrations. So whether it's a high school graduation, Thompson under this desk, keep going.
Sorry.
You know, the National Honor Society over at Long's Joe, the eighth-grade graduation of Long's Joe students, which was held in the Field House, get the view from the stage, students at Crocker. Students at Crocker singing, you know, "The Times of Your Life." And it was great to hear not only the students singing it, but as I was taking the picture, there was, their parents in the back were singing that as well. So it was really great to hear both the voices of the students and our parents singing in unison and supporting our students here in Fitchburg. And I just want to thank our staff. This was from our mentorship award ceremony that we had about a month or so ago at the Art Museum. These are all our principal leaders, people from central office. And then today, Thompson, next picture, we held our leadership retreat and really celebrated the items that we talked about early in the strategic plan. And as you saw here tonight, one example of the evolving teacher leaders that we have in the district, the staff from Memorial. So I've been honored to stand with all these dedicated educators as we try to make Fitchburg Public Schools the best urban district in the state. I know I can't see Dr. Knight on the screen, but that was my entry plan goal, my motif, theme, and we've made strides to get there. And as you heard from Memorial tonight, in some cases, although the data's embargoed and I can't talk too much about it, you clearly heard from them that we are outperforming state averages in some of the more affluent communities. So the plan that everybody in the district has been working on is coming to fruition, and the school committee should take pride and comfort in that. Again, here happened to be the Fitchburg High School team presenting their Teacher Leadership Academy project, which involved an adjustment to the high school schedule, which was adopted and passed by a vote of the Fitchburg Education Association, as the high school contract, or high school schedule is in the contract. So here we had three people who, I think only one had been two years on the instructional leadership team, really look at a problem, diagnose it, collaborate amongst staff members on how to address the problem for the coming year. So that was really great to see, that the project actually turned into an actionable item and an outcome that'll benefit our students. And they use data from different blocks to quantify the reason that it was necessary to change. So, and it really came down to using that data inquiry cycle that you heard Mr. Thompson talk about as he debriefed about the strategic plan. Again, here's, you know, just some more pics from Governor Healy's visit. That was, for those of you who were able to attend that day, it was, it was an intimate event in the high school library. And really, not only are students being able to have a conversation directly with state education leaders, but our staff also was able to mingle and network and talk, and really hear firsthand the view of the governor, Secretary Tutwiler, and Commissioner Riley. You know, as a son of immigrants, you know, one of the things that I know that immigrants always have a sense of is having their voice heard. And that's been one of my goals when I first became superintendent. I remember talking to the administrative team, and my goal was, I want to make sure your voice is heard. That, the goal was to take steps forward in having our staff's voice heard more, our students' voice heard more, our community's voice heard more. Last week, or was it two weeks ago now, we had the community brunch here in this very room. And you can see that the picture, from the picture, the room is full. This is our second community brunch that we held, that we sponsored. And one of the members who attended, I'll just say a confidant of the mayor, said, you know, there's a lot of new faces here, and that's a good thing. So I'm glad that the efforts of the school department, we've been able to engage more organizations in the community, especially as we evolve and emerge from COVID. Having those community partnerships that we also talked about in the strategic plan is extremely important. Again, talking about voice and, again, being, you know, the child of newcomers to this country, over the last really few years, we've been running an English language learner program for adults in the community. And again, here's another picture of celebration where adults were receiving certificates. This is about a month or so ago at South Street Elementary. And again, people are clapping as their fellows, you know, participants get, you know, certificates in their advancement of English. I'll never forget, a few years ago, it was during the first year of COVID, where we actually had to hold the certificate ceremony outside in the parking lot at South Street. And the last speaker spoke about how grateful she was that the program was held and that she had been able to get a new job, so she, get a new job because her English was better, but also that she could speak to her children's teachers, and she was really proud of that. So again, it's kind of, I don't know, life sometimes comes full circle and really coincidentally, and really with a lot of hard work, support, I don't know how many meetings to get to the point where Crocker Elementary School first started as a design, an idea, I mean, there was a need clearly for Crocker, given its age, its condition. And now the Crocker Elementary School project has broken ground. Foundation footings are being poured as of last week. And, you know, we're looking at two years of construction, and the city of Fitchburg will have a new school for grades one through five students. So that's something to be proud of, and the mayor and the city council, I want to thank you for your support. It's been a long journey. Journey's not over yet, but it's looking good. This was something I shared with, actually, we, as our leadership team, working with Carrie Purcell, there is a, it's called a Man in the Arena speech by President Roosevelt. Coincidentally, I think Calvin Brooks, there was some reference to that at his, I don't know if it's his retirement party.
Theodore Roosevelt.
Theodore Roosevelt, yeah. And really, when you're in the arena, especially the public arena these days, really not to, you know, listen to your critics too much, but it's a challenging environment. And again, as a school department, we've stuck to our plan, our values, and focusing on what's always best for the students. Again, you know, one of the book studies that we did a year and a half or so ago was this book, Cast. And really, this was for the leadership team and looking at all the systemic challenges that exist. This was really more just kind of a history of a little bit of the United States and compared the United States to some other countries and societies. And this is a book that still, two years later, I have principals who talk about that and the parallels to public education and what we face in, whether it be the state, in terms of how do we, you know, take down those barriers, remove those barriers? Otherwise, we're just continuing it, so. And I think just kind of as we look forward and as a community and as a country, you know, one of the things that I think we've all seen probably too much is there's a lot of anger post-pandemic, and we work with a lot of people who have struggled over the last few years, whether it be our, you know, our students, our families, in some cases, our staff. And really, the goal is that we all work together, we collaborate to solve problems. And, you know, when we don't have the answer, to try to show some grace. We're trying to do the best we can. We recognize we're not always perfect. But it's a journey, and again, we look to make progress on that journey and get better every day. So I guess with that, I just wanted to say thank you, I guess, in the language that I was first taught, the language that I learned, and the language that I'm trying to learn. So again, thank you, and I look forward to hearing more progress and good things from the future.
Good luck with the recent parent ticket.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. The bus presentation is not going to occur tonight, that'll probably occur in the fall. So the school committee can go to action.
All right. Does the committee wish to bundle the items, action items, or?
Make a motion to bundle.
Bundle 23-276. Is that, was that an approval?
Yes.
Thank you. Up through and including 23-279. Motion to accept?
Yes.
In favor? Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to approve the bundle?
Motion made.
Second?
Second to approve the bundle, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous. No need for executive session. Motion for adjournment.
Second?
Made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, we are adjourned.